This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this regular council meeting into session 7:00 PM, 21st, 2022. Counselor Allen filling in for Mayor Hobart. Any additions or correction? First, join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I almost forgot that, it wouldn't go here. Additions or corrections to the agenda? Any tonight?
We have addition, new business C, which is the staff report regarding winter averages.
Business C. New business? Winter averages?
Yeah, it's this one.
Oh, yeah.
This is a brief summary, it's winter averages.
Is that it? Anybody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we accept the agenda with the addition of new business C, winter averages.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb, second by Counselor Ash. Stephanie, please.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any presentations tonight?
Oh, we don't have.
Almost there.
Moving to Mayor's Report, Mayor is on vacation tonight, so skip that one. Moving on to Citizen of the Month, Counselor Ash has picked this month, so I'll let her take it over from here.
Yes. Right here?
Yep.
Perfect timing. It's Kevin Keane, it's like, is one of them? All right, so I chose Rachel Organ as Citizen of the Month. Rachel has contributed for a long time in very many ways. She led the charge on organizing the entire mural project in town, working with the business owners and the street artists, and getting funding and volunteers. She's led a lot of beautification and landscaping projects in town. She helped facilitating the farm-to-family food boxes last summer during COVID. She organized the garden tour and much more. So, for all of these things, I chose you as Citizen of the Month.
There you go.
Thank you.
Stay as long as you want.
Oh, this will be boring, I'm sure.
Well, well done, Rachel, and thank you for all your efforts. And the murals, I think everybody especially enjoys those. It's easy for everybody to overlook a flower project that they don't know about, but the murals, I think everybody can see those every day, so appreciate it. That might be my favorite, too.
Oh, we didn't even see that, there is a draft that a woman on it. Yeah, we didn't choose that one.
Thank you for all your effort.
It's the volunteer effort that really makes a difference in this town. And without it, it would be a different place.
And what, you didn't see that? All that work we did.
You guys been helping, too?
We got dragged all over the place.
Okay, we'll move on to Council Committee Meeting Reports. If anybody has any?
No.
Nope, are not. Okay. I can't remember if I reported on the cemetery since we have an in-person meeting. I think I did report on that. Since then, I was able to test the aluminum poles. I was not gonna do it, but I happened to be walking the dog. Lo and behold, there was one of our new workers up there, and there was a pole, so I walked up and set him in the hole, and they're too small diameter. They're two-inch sleeves, we should probably get an inch and three-quarter outside instead of inch and a half outside, because they wobble around quite a bit. But the good news is, throw it up on one shoulder, easy peasy, almost one-handed, and that was the quarter-inch wall, which felt the right rigidity. Instead of the eighth inch, felt a little wobbly. But I think quarter-inch wall, inch and three-quarter are close. I think we're money on those, so. That's all I have. Topics from the floor, the audience. We're gonna be out of here quick. Consent Agenda for Acceptance, Library Board Meeting Minutes for February 2022, page 1 through 3. May I have a chance to look those over?
Yeah. Good to me.
Yeah, I did, too. Looked like there were some vandalism issues going on there. And some, yeah, and some sign upgrades or changes going on, but just a couple of garden hoses or something.
Claude's gonna put the shelves in on Friday.
Yep.
I might be helping.
Do we wanna do them all? City Council Meeting Minutes for March 7th, 202022, pages 5 through 8? Think we do. Oh, that's right, I got A and then B and C, sorry. We'll just do the library for now.
Yeah, if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb, Counselor Ash. Call roll, please.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Webb. Motion carried.
Moving on to Consent Agenda for Approval, City Council Meeting Minutes for February 15th, page 4, and also City Council Meeting Minutes for March 7th, 2022, page 5 through 8. I don't think I had any. They were so good, there was no correction.
Don't get used to it.
I was reading in here where it says Webb suggested adding a statement in a resolution, the city no longer issuing waivers of remonstrance. Didn't we already, we passed that resolution?
And it was?
Okay.
That was the same meeting.
My old memory, couldn't remember if that was added or not.
There was a "as" to that effect.
Any other discussion? Oh, looking good. Wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council Minutes for February 15th, 2022, and March 7th, 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Ash. Keep Counselor Norman for a second. Call roll, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any unfinished business? Any? New Business A, Public Works Committee Recommendation, Knott Street Project, page 9. From George Tice, March 3rd, 202022. I have read this. Any questions or discussion on this? It says shovel-ready, is that a separate funding mechanism coming our way, or?
No, it's just so that that project would be ready, engineering would be done and ready for that project to be completed once funding is available. So that's a project being shovel-ready. The design's already done.
Just trying to get ahead of the build-back better money we're anticipating?
This is just in preparation for any money that might come down. It could be an SCA grant, it could be anything. That's pretty much the scope of my knowledge of it.
Dollar amounts or something that staff?
It was based off of estimate for engineering.
Okay. I don't think we discussed that committee, our value was, but. And how are we gonna fund this, SDCs?
I don't know.
Is this for the whole length of Knott Street, I'm assuming?
I think this one stops at Nickerson. Is how it was written.
Nickerson, the end of Nickerson.
Yeah. Did I miss that in here? I'm not seeing.
It doesn't really specify.
No, maybe not.
I just saw expansion, I just saw expansion of Knott Street.
... about what the scope would be, and that's why we're pushing for doing the preliminary engineering report to begin with.
But I don't... Maybe I made that up. I feel like I missed, I thought it wasn't here.
Yeah, it talks about, talks about some improvements at the end there for the trailhead, so I was just wanting to clarify if this is all the way to the end, or?
Well, that's the only thing I'm not sure about, is because we don't own the trailhead or the property it's on, so.
No.
I mean, that wouldn't be included.
But I think that might be down here where the county, the state, or ODOT, and possibly the county be involved in this.
Yeah, where they would help financially.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I told you it'd be boring. It's good, watch the government work.
Well.
Maybe we should get clarification on some of that. That seems a little lacking of details as far as how far, what we're doing. I guess I assumed it was all the way, but now Stephanie's got me thinking.
Well, and we're not really making the decision as, we're just basically, this is a recommendation from the committee to move forward on the project that the city has suggested should be. I think staff has ideas around that, but I don't know. Either way, we would want to move forward.
Yeah.
If it was a partial or a full. I guess we could come back later and go, it needs to go all the way, or we can get clarification.
And you can specify it now, too, if you guys want to make sure it goes all the way, then say you approve the project and it will go the full length.
Well, I'm just wondering if we do get a shovel-ready money or a grant or something, why stop at Nickerson Loop when the road obviously could use some improvements to the end?
That was my thinking, and I don't know where I would have read that, is stopping it.
I mean, I realize the trail eventually, I realize the trail eventually is gonna push on through, but for some reason, I have a feeling that trailhead will stay.
There's a, it's supposed to stay, and Dale should know more about that, but there's a lot of traffic all the way to the trail.
No, there's plans to develop more of a trailhead than what you see it's there now. Probably double or triple the size. Supposed to be an inlet and an outlet out of there, more of a...
Yeah, I was, another one of my concerns was if it was gonna stop there, then it's hard to get park division on board if we're not doing all the way down, you know, so.
Stephanie, can I, can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
That was... So, while both on Knott Street and State Street, we had the extra money, so we've ordered the topographic survey to get to the engineer. And what we asked Public Works to do was to back the engineering, which is what you're seeing in both the A and B, the Knott Street and the State Street, engineering and new business, what Public Works recommended. On Knott Street, the topo and the end of the improvements essentially stop at Nickerson Creek. That's, that's where we ended the topo and where the design is gonna end at this point.
Nickerson Creek, just past the new doctor's house.
Yeah, just, just past Nickerson, Nickerson subdivision there. So that's kind of where the design was gonna end.
Probably because the potential development path there is probably not very high.
Well, it's not, well, it actually, there has been some inquiries because south of the right-of-way is 90, 90 feet of city limits. So there has been some inquiries about some land divisions there. And I don't, that, we just kind of figured getting up to that point was probably gonna be expensive enough as opposed to going the full length. But I agree that the rest of the road could use some improvements. But as far as the full design and that sort of thing, it could be, we could kind of be pushing our luck with just a couple of homes down there.
Yeah, well, storm drainage on that section is near as big an issue as out the front end, so.
But on, on both of those, it isn't part of the reason that we had the extra money, we're getting the topo survey done on both Knott Street to the end of the subdivision and all of State Street. The, the problem is, this isn't just like the, the whatever relief money or, or infrastructure money. ODOT has grants for these kinds of improvements. The problem with it is, is that, like Stephanie said, you have to have something shovel-ready. You have to have the engineering plans. And, and kind of already got your skin in the game. And that's been one of, one of the issues with, with some of our bigger projects is we're up against bigger cities or other cities who have an engineering plan. And for these, for these bigger, more substantial ODOT grants, that's what they wanna see. They want you to submit the grant with a plan in hand. And just saying, well, we kind of would like to do this, and we, you know, we don't really have a plan or engineering to solve the problems. They, that's not what they wanna hear on those bigger grants. You know, the SCA grant and saying, hey, we're just gonna pave some streets, that's fine. But if you want those bigger dollar grants to do bigger projects, for me, the set of engineering plans in hand is the city. And so that's what, that's what Public Works Committee is asking, is that the, the city either budget or figure out financially how we can take that next step with the, with the design phase.
Thank you, Ben. I still am a little concerned if we don't have, maybe not all the engineering, but some road width improvements or some sidewalk plan or maybe storm drain that we're not gonna get the Parks Department involved in helping us with any of this. But I don't know if we would or not anyway, but it's kind of, when I read this, I thought they were going for a money from two or three places at once or something.
Well, and that's, I mean, just to be honest with you, Counselor Allen, that's kind of where we need politicking from you guys and getting in the county's ear and saying, hey, we're trying to move forward on this. We definitely need them to be partners in, in these projects. They've, they've got a trailhead there, the traffic is increasing, there's gonna be bicycle traffic.
It just seems, yeah. You're right, I think we have a better chance if you get ODOT involved with this bicycles, improvements and safety to the trailhead.
But I, you know, sometimes it feels like, I know Josette's not here tonight, you know, but I know that she's, she's broached this topic of Knott Street and with State Street because it's a heavily, you know, there's a lot of people that live out Keyzey and Stony Point and the log trucks that use State Street. And it kind of falls, I, and she, she may be able to correct that later on, but it, it seems like that kind of falls on deaf ears sometimes, you know? And I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how we kind of, you know, spark that, that fire with, with them, so.
Right. I'm definitely not against getting some of the work done if we can find the funds or... I guess they're thinking of using the ARPA funds here, is that what we're?
Well, the $35,000 is just for the engineering report expense, is that true? Okay. So I think that point is where you would start.
It's about halfway down Knott Street, if my memory serves me correct.
What's that? Oh, it'd be a little more, it'd be about two-thirds.
Is it? I wasn't, I wasn't sure if it was over half or not. You got the buses there.
Right here is the creek, right there.
If you make it to the second, second Nickerson Loop.
Between half and bridge, probably.
That would be halfway. If you go to the creek, you're gonna be
Just a little path.
More than halfway. I walked it many times.
Well, I think part of the thing is, somebody might have concerns. I think there's some big culverts that cross there. Was it Nickerson?
Before the culverts, it sounds like.
You get into the engineering past Nickerson, I think they know it's gonna get involved in a new half-bridge culvert type thing and probably big money, but then you can get the fish people involved. So if you can get everybody on board, but that's pretty tough to do, too, I think. So.
And so I guess, yeah, just the, the main thing with both of those recommendations was that we just try to get a step forward, and when bigger money opportunities come forward, we're, we're more prepared. And, you know, we're not submitting a grant saying, oh, we're just thinking about doing this when, you know, another city of our size has gotten the engineering and has a plan and is ready to execute, you know?
Yeah, there's gotta be some build-back better money coming, if you're ready for it, I think.
So that's, yeah, so that's however, you know, however we do it, and there's a lot more opportunities with Knott Street with storm SDCs, the water line needs upgraded, so water SDCs. There's, there's, there's a lot more that can be applied there. State Street is really gonna be the tough one in that there's no capacity. It just needs, it just needs kind of redone the sidewalk ramps. All need redone to ADA along there. And there really isn't, that's pretty much cash out of hand without some grants or, and/or cooperation from, say, the county on State Street. So, Knott Street will, there's a lot more funding opportunities there, both internally and externally, whereas State Street is just, needs to be upgraded and it's really on the city to do it.
And I think we're only gonna have this preliminary work done before we can actually understand how big a critter we're fighting here, because, you know, we can kind of... I think the engineering will get us a little closer to what that total amount's gonna be, especially on State Street. That's gonna be a big project that looks like we're gonna probably have to grind down or do something different. So, I mean, present us some options anyhow. We'll have to do it in phases, I don't know. We always gotta do the preliminary work.
So where's this $35,000 gonna come from? Angie's not here, so.
And 25, yeah, that's pretty cool.
It's not saying where the money's coming from here.
I didn't have an answer for that one.
So because of that question, and should we go all the way? I don't know, maybe we should push this out until next meeting, get some more clarification. Do you know where the money's coming from?
No, I mean, like I said, on Knott Street, there's probably be a lot of system development charge money that could go into that because there's storm drain, there's capacity, with capacities probably gonna change.
Is this time, is this time-sensitive, or we have to move forward today?
Well, we just accept the recommendations is all.
Yeah, I don't think, you don't need to move.
We need to do this.
I don't think you need to, I think you're asking the right question. As far as, I think the next step would be to get an answer from Angie for your next council meeting as to how, how these funds would play out, because I think Dale kind of hit it on the head. It can be, we've got a lot of SDC money. Knott Street could be pretty much split up amongst all of the SDC funds, minus parks. State Street's gonna be a little more, that's pretty much gonna be cash out of pocket. So I think the, the right, the right question would be to, or the right action would be to set it aside and then ask Angie for a breakdown on where these funds would come from, especially going into a budget here.
Right, I assume this is for next year's budget. I don't think we're gonna move on it like instantly.
So it'll be for the next budget cycle, or for this budget cycle?
Being that it's coming to council, I just assume they need our permission to do this, or they wouldn't be asking, so.
They want your direction to put it in the budget for next year. But I can come back on the 7th, because I asked the same question, I didn't get an answer.
I'm looking at time, would you say or nay it?
I thought I missed that.
You guys aren't gonna be in favor of it, then staff doesn't wanna waste their time putting, trying to put it, figure out how it could be accommodated in the budget, and you guys say it.
You can just say it. Have a consensus that we're good with the intent of the projects and that we need to know, yeah.
Table it till the next meeting. I'm going back on the seventh.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Or prove it and say if it can be done, if you can find the money for it. There's really two options for that one.
Well, I think, you know, we'd want to move forward exploring the avenues of how we are going to fund these two projects for the preliminary work. I mean, we still haven't given them a blessing. We're just correcting staff to keep moving forward on it, bring us back more information. We'll stick it in the budget if we agree with that and then the Budget Committee and the Council will have a say on that, so.
So you want, you want staff to put it in the budget if they can figure it out? Or you want to wait till the next meeting?
I personally want to hear a little clarification. Yeah, I'd like to have them bring us back how they're going to pass the goals we're going to fund this with.
So that's what you're asking specifically to study for the preliminary?
But that's still, that's still moving forward.
Yeah, I don't think even here was against the ideas.
We want it to happen, just know how.
But it's going to cause a financial strain somewhere, we might be.
Well, I mean, if I hear, yeah, we're going to add it to water rate or something, I might want to know that.
So did I hear motion or joint, did I hear a motion to the table until next meeting to allow staff to report where the funding would be in the budget?
We'll move. I'm learning those tricks.
I'll second.
A motion for both recommendations.
Yeah.
Do we want to talk about the Knott or State Street one a bit? Are you guys good? Can we read that? You're good?
Yeah, I'm good with it. We didn't move it forward, I think.
Yeah. I mean, for the people at home, they probably don't know what that is basically. Looks like improvements from bridge to.
E Street.
E Street?
E Street, base of the hill.
Pavement, subgrade, probably grinding sidewalks, approaches, wheelchair accessible, nine yards, right?
Sounds like.
And we're going to go to new business C. Staff new water meter averages? Is that what you said, Stephanie?
Yes.
So a report from Ben, winter averages for sewer consumption billing.
Oh, I didn't.
Did you not? It was sick.
I didn't get it today.
Sorry.
Hopefully my building.
Will up $20 again.
Only to use the water.
I had two people living with me during that time too because of COVID, so.
Hey, I'll pull the COVID card.
Find out.
Thanks.
And Ben is on the line, as you know, to report on it, so.
Or if you have questions, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. I found a toilet in my house, Ben, that was running so silently, I didn't know it. So I'm hoping that was last year's issue with 10,000 gallons for two people.
Well, didn't you, didn't you tell me you were going to have your brother-in-law stop taking such long showers in the winter?
Yeah. That wasn't him.
Oh, okay.
Brother-in-law, yeah. I'll just close it down for November, December.
No, that was just an update for you guys. So, you know, if your constituents are asking questions, you know, the rates, you know, people's utility bill changes a little bit starting next month, depending on how much they used over the winter, so.
What were the changes, Ben? Did we check, raise the rates on that or something?
We, the rate stays the same that you set. It's just how much we bill each customer based on what they used over the winter.
Right.
So it's that, it's the same $2.60 per thousand gallons, but that, that number changes based on their winter average.
Yeah, I think a lot of people, including me for many years, didn't understand how the sewer rate usage is actually calculated. If I now understand it right, it's going by how much water you use during a three-month period in the winter or four-month period in the winter.
Period, yep.
Okay. Yeah, so maybe now I finally understand it. November.
So we average your November, December, January, February usage of water and then for the next 12 months, that's what your, that's what your sewer consumption is.
You get charged that average every month.
How does that average work out for the average person though if their usage for the rest of the year? So if they averaged 4,000 gallons a month, would that average out for everybody the rest of the year or?
Still very inspiring.
People tend to use more in the summer because they water and wash cars, so I guess it wouldn't be.
That's why we do the average based on the winter consumption because we know that that water that's used in the summer is not going into the sewer system.
Right.
So it takes what is typically your lowest usage months and that's what you get billed for, for the next 12 months.
So when we, when we had our sewer rate study done, I believe it was 2015, council was presented with two options where we just did it based on what you used every month, like we do with water, or we did a four-month average in the winter, which is, it's, it's really only, it only really comes down to probably 40 hours of staff time for me to calculate it and for Cassandra to update everybody's account. But it's a lot more fair that way because, you know, we just don't want to be charging people for watering their yard essentially or washing cars in the summer. So that's, that's where that came from.
So I imagine our sewer gallon is three quarters or less of our total water usage?
Yes, it's the, what we bill for consumption on sewer is considerably less. And then, of course, we have a lot less sewer connections. We have a lot of water users that don't have sewer, people who are out of town or people who just have a spigot hooked up to a water meter in town. And it's, the sewer consumption is, is a little bit hypothetical. It's not, it's not something that we meter. I mean, ideally, we would have some kind of metering device on everybody's sewer line and we would bill it like water, but obviously that's completely impractical. So this is just kind of our, the best way of getting a number for people.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah. And our, our average three-quarter meter is still at 4,900 gallons a year. It's held steady there for the last two years and that's still way less than the six, I noted that in the staff report, way less than the 6,800 gallons per month that the average US household uses. So Vernonia does very good on water, water conservation in, in that regard. Sorry about the dog barking. So we, we do good there and yeah, that's where we're at. I, I will add one more thing. We, we had a couple of customers who had leaks all winter and didn't fix them. And the ordinance states that they have to accept that Escon amount on their bill until they fix the leak and get four months of a new average and then we'll adjust it. So I'm just giving you a heads up as a council, if you get some citizens who come in and are complaining about very high utility bills, it's because they allowed a leak to go all winter and now they have to follow the rules and pay that rate until they, until they can show that it's fixed and get four months without a leak and then we'll readjust their Escon, which is what the ordinance says, so.
So their Escon is still going by the previous year?
Nope. This year when they had their leak.
Oh, so they, okay, I got it. So they're leaking and now their Escon is super high, like what happened to me?
And once they fix it, then after four months of a normal rate, their rate would go back down.
So were, did the city notify them of the leaks?
Over and away.
Yes.
Okay.
Every, every single month. And in, and in fact, we've been, we've been doing, we've been doing them a service by leaving their water on because the water ordinance, the billing ordinance says, if you don't fix your leak within a month, we shut your water off, lock your water meter and shut your account off. And we have a couple of customers who've been leaking 100,000 gallons a month into the ground every month for four months now, four or five months, and we haven't, we haven't pulled the trigger on them, but they're getting really close to, they're getting really close to losing their water service.
I imagine that's a fairly large substantial bill.
It, the, the, the consumption is high and I believe Stephanie and I figured it out for one of them, their sewer consumption is going to go up about $175 a month. Just on their, just on their sewer consumption.
So I hope it's not a financial situation that's spiraling some of this out of control for some of these folks. So if it is, I'd like to know that if they're going to come to council, if they're, if it's a financial thing and they're just getting deeper and deeper and deeper into it.
They're paying their bills every month and they basically told us that they just can't get around to fixing it.
Well, and if we allow it or make concessions for it, then it happens in summer or out of water, so.
So, I mean.
Like you have to address this, otherwise it's going to be a problem for a much bigger problem.
And maybe that, and maybe that's, maybe that's partly on staff, maybe after two months, we should have just shut their water off until they fix the problem. But at the same time, it, it's kind of a catch-22. Are you going to shut a family off from water? Because they can't fix their leak? And then when we come around to this time a month or this time a year when we're recalculating Escon, you know, how do, how do you handle that, especially when the ordinance is pretty clear about what should happen? And I understand your, I understand your concerns, Counselor Allen, and if somebody comes to you, you know, I mean, we can definitely hear them out and if it's a, if it's seriously a financial burden, I'm sure we can work something out, but just ignoring us when the city is telling you you have a leak and giving you opportunities and kind of bending the rules for you month after month, I don't know, I don't know where that, where you kind of draw the line there.
Well, the, the working something out with them would be able to, would be putting them on a payment plan so they can pay that over a longer period of time. Because again, with the ordinances and resolutions, you have to fix it within 30 days or you don't get any money off of your bill. End of story. And that's why that was established that way is because people were always coming and there was no consistent method to do leak forgiveness. And if they are blatantly ignoring it and saying, it's fine, I can afford to pay the bill, at some point, push us from the shove and they have to be forced to fix it.
Well, I agree. If somebody wants a big bill, I can turn on my faucet, let it run 24 hours a day and pay the bill. But then I can't come in and complain about the sewer rates, but if it's a financial thing and they do fix it, it seems like there should be some kind of a solution. Like you say, you have to get four months worth, but then do we have to wait till November to start it again? Or you're saying they fix it now, we can start a four-month period?
Yeah, once they fix it, then that four-month period can start and then it could be adjusted on that fourth month.
Was there an argument on, we don't think we have a leak, we think you guys have a bad meter or?
Everyone says they don't have a leak and we go out and confirm whether or not they have a leak and then explain to them how they can discover different, if it's in the ground or if it's in the house, and then it's up to them to figure it out from there. But some acknowledge that there's a leak, the majority of people fix it, whether it be in the first day or the first month or first two months. But there are those people who just say, I don't care, I can afford to pay the bill, it's easier than.
And that's exactly, that's exactly what happened. I was going to say, that's exactly what's happened with a couple of these people is they acknowledge that they have a leak, they just don't want to fix it.
Is it a ordinary lot, black, basic ground?
I don't know exactly what they're, I don't know the topography of their lot, but they've, they've acknowledged that they have a leak and they just tell us they're not going to fix it.
Oh, well, what's to argue about if they tell you you're not going to fix it? At some decision, the city will have to make a decision how long they're going to let them go without fixing it.
And that's just, that's kind of why I brought that up is I just wanted you guys to beware, if somebody comes to you talking about, well, my bill just went up $175, there's a reason for that. It isn't, it isn't just, it just didn't randomly go up $175 a month. There's, there's a real reason why that happened. So I just was trying to prepare you guys for people coming and potentially saying something to you or coming to city council or raising a stink online or something like that. There's, there's more to it than just, oh, my, my bill is super high.
Well, there's going to be a large increase on the sewer side of their bill and not their water that they're using.
They're already seeing it on water.
Yeah.
Right.
Even if they fix the problem, they're going to have big sewer consumptions for four, five, six months to get it resolved.
Yes.
But to be honest, once they are back down to their normal water usage, the cost of their sewer consumption will equal roughly what they were previously paying in their leak. So for that four-month period, they're going to be basically paying close to or the same as they were paying when they had the leak. So it, it will still be fairly equal. It'll be, the large bill will be when they have the leak and they have the sewer consumption.
I wonder if they realize it's not that hard to put a ditch which, six inches from the other line, dig a ditch, throw a one-inch line in there and glue it up with PVC. I mean, it's, it'll take you like a day. six inches from the other line, dig a ditch, throw a one-inch line in there and glue it up with PVC. I mean, it'll take you like a day. Maybe they're not, uh, never been around that kind of stuff, maybe.
Well, it's, it's actually inexplicable, Counselor Allen, because.
I got a little sane, I'll tell you later.
Cassandra calls them every month and says, hey, just as a heads up, you're getting closer to us turning off your water for not fixing your leak. And they just tell her, ah, don't worry about it. It's almost like they don't care that we're gonna shut them off next month. I don't, I really don't get it, to be honest with you.
Have they been noticed officially?
Every month.
We, we call them twice a month. Yes, would, they have been, um, they, we have put a door hanger on their door with the city ordinance. And the part about them getting their water shut off highlighted for, I believe, three months in a row now.
Well, they're gonna call your bluff.
Well, they're,
They can make that for two months to get shut off no matter what.
Yeah, they're playing poker.
Unless they can show us a documentation of appointment of a plumber coming to fix it.
And the thing, the thing is, Counselor Webb and I were talking about this today and, and, and before, a couple, maybe a week ago, is that, yeah, they're paying for the water, but the reality is, is that we're, we're spending the electricity and the chemicals and our prices are going up. And that's a hundred thousand gallons a month going straight into the ground. That it, it, it ends up, it ends up costing the rest of us.
Well, we're, we're selling the water, but if it's going into the ground, then at least it's not going into our sewer system and it's not going down our sewer system. Right?
Well, unless the sewer, or toilet not shutting off or sink not shutting off, then it is going in the sewer.
And if it goes in the ground and it's next to a manhole that's leaking, you'd never know.
I guess what would really kind of bring this to a head is this going on during water curtailment.
Yeah, you'd have to turn it off for the first month.
Well, this should be a moot point after next month. This should be, it should be fixed. So.
But we just got, is it just one here that's being stubborn or we have?
There's multiples.
There's multiples.
Yeah. One in particular.
A moot point, why? Because the consumption going up? Oh, because it is gonna get turned off. Okay.
Makes me wanna go put a shut-off valve right where mine comes up under the house where I could isolate the underground part and see if the meter's still turning.
They should.
Most houses.
Maybe that we recommend.
And if the water gets turned off, they're still paying sewer though, right?
Yep. Well, if their water is off, their account is off.
Yeah, their account would be off, but when it came back on, they would still,
Okay.
At the point that their, uh, account was reactivated, they would still have to do four months to get a new ab, uh, sewer consumption average applied.
They won't be without water for very long. It's very rare for somebody to be stubborn enough to just go without water.
We've had them here in town.
I can see that.
I know one guy.
One.
Well, it's, get it fixed and move on. But nobody's come to me, so maybe I'm lucky.
Never bought the bill yet. Happen in two months.
Thanks for the good work, Ben.
Yep, you bet. Uh, have a, have a good night, council, and, uh, we'll, we'll talk to you guys next time.
Hey, Ben, while I got you, when's the mowing gonna start at the cemetery?
Very shortly. So we're, we're planning on it. We, um, Mitch, uh, we needed to kind of do a bit of an overhaul on the tractor. Um, obviously all the fluids and stuff. We had a few parts that we needed to replace. Um, all of that, um, is hopefully getting put back, Mitch should be getting that put back together and the mower ready and as soon as we get a good dry day here, uh, we're gonna get our first mow on. We actually, we talked about that, um, last Friday morning. So.
Yeah, I wanted to also tell you that flag looks good and thank you for your efforts on that.
You bet.
What about the brass deal? Are we gonna figure out that or did it ever clean up or was it?
I, I, it's still sitting in, it's still sitting in my, uh, office. Um, I do need to do a little bit of cleanup on it. It's bowed. Um, what I, I just, it, it's just kind of always at the bottom of my list, unfortunately. But I need to find somebody that's got like a large heat treat oven that can heat that thing up and then like smash it between two boards and flatten it out. And then we'll get it put on there. I'd like to get it done for Memorial Day.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Have a good night.
Business from the departments.
Have my staff report. My February calls for service. February was pretty light. Being called for February, short mark, but still wasn't the less. Um, I didn't get code enforcement numbers on there this time. Um, I did want to give you guys an update about injured animals. Um, is reviewing that and is gonna run it by our insurance company before he makes a decision. And he's probably gonna wanna see the document you wrote up. That Dell wrote up.
Okay.
Just to take a look at that. But he's running it by the insurance company first to see if they say, yeah, that's a good idea or no, not gonna happen.
Yeah, I never thought of that aspect of insurance company.
Do you have one entry level applicant that I am going through the first stage of the application process? So I'll be probably asking for volunteers to be on the interview panel um, in the near future. Maybe end of next week, I think.
Was that the original one?
No, he pulled.
New one?
Yeah. Uh, just came in Friday.
Great.
Yeah, Thursday or Friday.
That's quite a long process before, you say everything went smoothly before you hit school or something?
What's that?
The, the hiring process for you? I mean, before you hit the academy and everything?
It takes a little while to get to, to get through the hiring process between, uh, well, the interview process, um, correction certified. Um, so I probably won't have to go through a testing process, which will save me a little bit of time.
Oh, this wasn't, this is not a brand-new high school kid. So.
This entry level, as far as patrol work goes.
Got, oh, great.
And he's out of another state. So he'll have to go through the, the full academy process still. Even though he's correction certified.
Remind me again how long that is?
Sixteen weeks.
All at once?
Yes.
Is that the same home or something?
Pretty much lived there for sixteen weeks.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, the, the first initial process and we'll, I'll do a, a basic background investigation before we get in too deep and then we'll go through an interview process and see if we want to pursue a little bit farther at that point and then we'll, we'll do the thorough background, psychological, medical. That, that takes quite a bit of time. Get those reports back, but we're gonna get started anyway. I mean, although we only have one, but we have one, so we may as well. We'll get moving. That's it.
Any comments from Chief? You wanna get called every time I see a suspicious vehicle in the school parking lot?
Um, you mean a patrol car?
You've seen the van with.
To have that documented. Um, if there's a suspicious vehicle up there, call dispatch. Then even non-emergencies, so that's at least tracked. Um, oftentimes I think most of them are kids parked up there.
There's traffic all times of the night. Counselor Allen's walking around out there, flashlights at night. I was? I mean, uh, not me. I mean, it, it'd really be helpful if the school would actually close. I think it used to be, wasn't it? The old school, didn't they have a closure after a certain time at night?
It used to be, I think, down, when it was down here.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would help the effort at least then.
Yeah, it's like an automatic.
At least have something to talk to them about. And then it would deter some of that activity. So when I actually did see somebody, it'd probably be more of a legitimate concern.
Yeah. Well, maybe we can discuss that further with the new superintendent.
Yeah.
I went by a school, looked like it was prison, all locked up, uh, where you turn us to Dairy Queen to go down to the beach, go clam digging. That school on the right has like an eight-foot chain link fence all the way around it and it's got a big gate that shuts.
Oh, right. The one right next to one-on-one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the old school. I think it's not used anymore.
Sort of like a good way to get stuck.
Like you're gonna go to Gerhardt's, go clam digging?
Yeah.
Run away.
Uh, I, I was gonna mention, I haven't seen the, uh, our little wagon, our speed detector wagon in a, quite some time.
Yeah, it hasn't been getting put out lately. We need to though. It's starting, the weather's starting to change, so we need to get it back out.
Probably down around the Green, is that Green Bridge construction even going on? I've never seen it.
I saw him the first two days.
Like they pulled out or something, huh?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened there. They talked to me a little bit about it and said that they were gonna be doing some overnight work um, when everybody was sleeping and was concerned about whether we had staff on in the middle of the night just in case they had problems. Um, but yeah, I never seen him out there. Only seen him out there a couple, for a couple of days and that was it.
Yeah, I keep expecting to come home that way. I come home that way most of the time. See a big backup or something, but so far, nothing.
Just the parade recently and I got a couple of nasty phone calls about the parade. Somebody was really upset he got stopped in traffic for twenty minutes.
Uh, that's Oregon law, twenty minutes.
Some of the parade permits, they can go a little longer. But yeah, he was pretty upset that he couldn't get home. She could've went around.
Yeah.
Maybe it was the person decided to drive through the parade.
It's entirely possible.
Oh, wow.
So other than that, nothing real serious going on.
Boy, kid.
Yeah.
No, uh, street lights. Are street lights.
They're not fixed yet?
Nope, don't think so.
I know we submitted the report to West Oregon. I'll follow up on that one.
I did. I called in my street light 'cause it stuck on.
Yeah, we had a whole list for him and, and Sergeant Carney took it over and dropped it off.
I called mine in two and a half years ago. It's not fixed. So good luck.
Yeah, so, but I talked to, I talked to Judy.
Works and when they, when they go by.
It turns on and off every ninety seconds.
Oh, nice.
All night.
There's one just passed the spar tree. The housing there, ten, twenty years and our street light's still burning. Who pays the bill on those?
That one's to notify them whether there's power there or not. I had one of those at my house, but, uh, the new people thought it would be smart to fix it. Now it goes on and off like everybody else's. And I told them that's what was gonna happen.
I'll follow up on that street lights though. But I haven't seen them. I'm not generally out at night.
Yeah.
We'll get that. And also I did get an email, but I didn't get it in, um, in this packet and I didn't see it until this morning, but we do have the quote for the leasing of the camera system. So that will come back probably to your next meeting.
Any update on our court cases?
Um, no, actually. Um, the, I'm not sure about the, the kids at this point. Um, I know they were set for trial, but I'm not, I can't remember what the dates were on those ones. And then the guy that broke the windows, he's back in jail.
Imagine that.
Yeah. Um, apparently did some damage at the courthouse.
They lit a balcony, turned around.
He must really like the food, maybe. I don't know.
Sounds like alcohol could've been involved in that.
Wow. Anything else for the chief? Finance update, twelve through thirteen. Angie on with us or not here? I must've wore her out today talking to her.
Maybe she thought there'd be no questions since she came in or called her or emailed her.
There was only one. Item. I guess I can speak to that, what little discussion we had on that, but, um, you know, she talks about the water. And prepared, prepared for a rate bump up a bit. Um, the payroll expense in water is up considerably from expected. And staff is pretty much saying it's, uh, the twenty thousand extra. Yeah, it's twenty-four grand up. Um, which is, that's significant, a lot of payroll. But, uh, quite a rash of leaking, leaks through town that they've had to deal with some in the middle of the night. So.
Yeah. Um, the other ones, I was wondering if we're not locating properly and then just doing the work on the backend. It sounds like now we're locating.
We're locating. There's only one that was from.
So if the sign people are putting signs in, hit four of our services.
They didn't call for locate.
Don't they pay for that? We charge them?
One.
It said four, I think, in here. I read that wrong. I thought they said this.
Jeff's report?
Yeah, Jeff's report he alluded to.
I thought there was a couple or something. Maybe it was two. I was like, oh, the contractor's damaging or? Not the locate's wrong or something. I don't know, but sound like, sound like.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a couple.
Two on services and a crew hit a service for the third one and then the Weed Avenue was a six-inch main down here. They opened up. Uh, yeah, it was like a line we didn't know. That was something, something there.
I was in the shower. Oh, really? And then back up. And then did it again and then I got out and I saw it on the city website. So I said, don't run the faucets, you'll clog them all up. Well, we didn't get any mud at my house.
So four unanticipated ones, it looks like. Or human caused.
So anyhow, I mean, that, yeah, there's, you know, in it.
It's one of the most tricky things is, are, are these anomalies that are recurring? Or is this the infrastructure that's creeping up on us?
Well, if you're higher in water, you should be lower in sewer, right? Cause unless we're working people.
Well, they were. Look at the payroll sewer. They're only forty percent.
It said minus thirty-six K in my notes here. Or it was seven, it was sorry. Payroll is, uh,
Nine point six percent.
Yeah, thirteen thousand was.
So. I mean, yeah, there's only X amount of workers, so. But overtime is an unexpected cost. You know, I know they had.
Night shift call up.
Well, they, yeah, they had the, the one at Rick's place that was after hours and I know they were called out on the one inch and a half that broke up here on Noakes. That was in the middle of the night, the way I heard the story. So. Um, you know, you're paying overtime. Those are, those are unexpected costs, although I know she. You know, you're paying overtime. Those are, those are unexpected costs, although I know she, I have to look at last year's budget. She usually puts an extra ten grand in there, just in case. And payroll, you know, line item, but.
Yeah, that's what I would like on this water stuff, is a more detailed accounting. Instead of these big general numbers before we go into wanting a rate increase, because if they're, if they're one-offs, or we're buying trucks, or we're doing this, or we had unexpected things, I don't know if we really have to raise the rate unless we need to raise the rate to hit our reserve. Goals, or, you know.
I mean, when I talked to Angie today, and she said, well, this is the hours. The employees turn in their hours per the department, and this is where they fall. This is how it's falling out, so. Well, and I know they did, I know when I talked to Josette. I think you guys bought a whole pallet of water meters, and I can't remember how many is on a pallet.
I think it was like sixty?
I think there's more, or they're like a hundred, I think.
Did they buy another one? Cause I didn't know they were installing them.
They, they more than done their sixty replacements, and then it sounded like we had a rash of meters that needed, that they have expired the pallet that they bought. So we're gonna have to buy another pallet. So we're gonna get hit a little bit there, but a lot of that will carry, that'll carry us into the next year. But, you know, it's out of this year's budget, so. Um, I don't know if that cold's snapping in on there again. Hopefully, our tracking process, if we're having meters that are repeat offenders for freezing up the break, and we need to change those.
Are we budgeting for fifty meter replacement a year?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Sixty a year.
Okay.
That's our meter replacement program.
And that's easy to, pretty easy to figure out the cost. Everything's going up a little bit.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's some more, there's some labor there, all the extra meters. I mean, putting in meters, time on a card, so.
Revenue's up thirty K, I see.
On water. No, it's not that much.
Well, it is. Two fifty-nine at this time last year, previous comparison to eighty-nine, so that's plus thirty K.
Well, yeah, but.
If you're going by same time last year comparison.
Yeah, I, I cut the budget revenue in half and compared it to that. Cause each year changes, depends on how much carryover we have and, you know, we, we trim off the required each year. It's, it's a different number.
Cash on hand went way down.
Yeah.
Is that because of the purchase of the truck and meters, or?
Well, the truck should, that's a budget design.
It was, so we're at eighty thousand go, did you ask?
Sure, she said she's down to what, twenty-seven something? I'm assuming a lot of that, that extra payroll. That was kind of a concern. She's getting kind of close on.
When transfers out, wouldn't that affect it also?
Yeah, I think the transfer out is, should be reserve funds. That's about the only thing we ever transfer out. And part of this, too, is last year when we did, well, it'd be water and sewer. It doesn't seem to be affecting sewer that much, but, and probably because I think, you know, we used to get that cash, cash coming over the counter, which is the connection fees and all those things. It, it ran about thirty grand a year, twenty-nine grand, somewhere in there. And we always kind of struggled how to do that, cause she, you know, she couldn't actually legitimately say she was expecting that. Because if the economy changes, it doesn't come in. And then, I don't know, it was weird in the budget. We always went round and round on it. So I think last year we eliminated that. And so we're in a transition year here, and so.
Let's throw the numbers off.
Yeah, it's gonna throw the numbers, um, and the rates probably gonna make an adjustment for some of that factor. That's another thing that's going on. So probably that, that number of this twenty-four is probably why cash on hand's going down. But we'll get into that when we.
Looks like sewer's doing okay.
Yeah, sewer, I mean, yeah, look at the revenue. Or cash at home, yeah. Revenue, revenues is, which is kind of interesting.
Yeah, how's cash on hand? Revenue go down from last year, but our cash on hand is up, so. You know, say, there's numbers here and there's no notes to go with anything, so it's really hard to dive into without recording Angie somewhere.
Pretty confusing. It's nothing but a big cluster, the way she's got it done. She might understand it, but I don't.
Yeah, well, yeah, it takes some time to understand what's going on. Yeah.
Roll up. It's not the detailed budget.
Yeah, yeah. Even the detailed budget is a whole lot better, really.
Well, it's.
It's a lot long.
You got some long, you got some long.
I'll send it out, so.
Longer you do it, the easier it gets.
Yeah.
Basically, break in a million dollars a year and try to run the sewer and water.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're, if you look in sewer, yeah, the revenue, we're eight tenths of a percent off from being where we should have been. But we're way down on payroll, way down on expenses. So that budget, you know, we're looking pretty, pretty good. The most of the budget everywhere looks pretty good.
Nothing would.
Yeah. I'm surprised Streets is looking as good as it is. We had that snow.
Maybe they put it on water over time. It's made out of water.
Yeah. It does, turns into water.
Uh, have you ever seen our budget book, Dawn?
I've been.
Some last year.
Yeah.
He's been on the budget.
But everything has kind of changed each year and it's more confusing than it was. It was simpler before.
Any more discussion on our rollup? Public Works update. Page fourteen, opposite side of the budget here. Looks like there are some notes here, or some pictures, yeah. I like that, classic sewer.
Pictures are worth a thousand words.
That's another thing, there's big road cones on Arkansas, right out in the middle of the road. One's tipped over and the other one's still up in the middle of the road. Been there for two days, just two cones. Don't know why. No reason for it. I don't know.
There's cones in the road?
Yeah, it's big cones, like twenty, the thirty, thirty-inch road cones. The two red ones. And there, one's tipped over right in front of my house, next house up, and the other one's up by our favorite house up there, right out in the road, about four feet.
Well, that one probably needs caution up there, but.
I don't know. No construction going on.
Yeah, I haven't seen contractors.
Somebody moved some road.
Somebody, somebody probably took them from the bridge project.
Oh, what?
They hooked them up there and set them in the road?
I wouldn't know anybody who would do that. Never seen that.
I find cones all over this town. There's cones in the river, there's cones in the lake.
Oh, I was on Broadway on a job right there on Clay and Broadway, doing that new building they built there by Starbucks, and a guy come across. I went around the dumpster, I couldn't see, and he went and grabbed my cones that were right there to guard people from hitting the dumpster, and ran across the street with them, and then dumped the bases off and took off around the building on the other side of the street. And I went on there and got them back. And he said, oh, I just moving them for you. Give them back here. What would they want with a cone?
As a kid, I acquired nine of the tall traffic ones with the like loop at the top.
And delineated?
For pole bending. This size, thinking when you're driving by with the pickup, you can just go like that.
But they didn't want the base. I could see he was gonna build his tent with it or something. He didn't want the base. He wanted the cone. That's a big pipe. I don't understand what he wants with those cones. Yeah. Anyway, weird. Want to state these limitations on that, chief?
I was just thinking of that.
Child.
When she turned eighteen, it was all over.
Any discussion on Public Works statement there? Looked like typed up by our staff, or was it?
It was Jeff, when we made it pretty for him.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Chris has passed his distribution one test.
Yep.
So is that just, that give us two certified, or you don't know? Sure? Okay.
I don't know what everyone's certifications are.
Yeah. I just did, I mean, we got four people.
We have nobody ready, since Jeff and Chris, and the other two are getting ready, so.
Yeah, they're not ready yet. So two other staff, almost logged it up hours, okay, I see.
I seen the fancy snowplow down there a couple of months ago.
Oh, good.
Don't know if they've hooked it up. Didn't look like it, but sitting there. Looks pretty nice.
He doesn't have any report, uh.
Meters.
The, uh, new sign down there for Spencer, they've got the iron sitting down there. In fact, when I seen Jeff the other day, he had a welder coming to, sound like start doing some work on it.
Oh, at the plant?
His concern is on the height. They can't lift the top section on with the backhoe. It's above their limit, so we're gonna have to get somebody else to put it up there, so. Backhoe, don't lift that high. They're built for digging.
We need to buy an old ten thousand pound rig all around here or something.
Yeah, I know, it would work.
I know where one is. I'm pretty sure it was a favor.
So anyhow, and they're, and I, I seen the panels, they're, they're big, they're pretty nice. Hopefully, somebody don't take a baseball bat to it. Hopefully, it's high enough. But the school's had theirs for years. It sits right there, ground level. Same thing, just the LED's sticking out.
So when they work on projects like that, what do they charge that to? Streets?
No, that'd be parks or general fund, depending on which fund paid for the project.
Yeah, and there's three entities involved in that, so.
I don't remember, I don't remember any funds coming from the parks on that, but we were just general funding our share of it.
So that would be in general fund?
I'm just curious if they put it on water or sewer, or they just.
No, they, they're working in.
It's not really streets, but.
I'm sure it's a general fund expenditure.
Any more discussion?
Just thank Jeff for the update. Every quarter.
Yeah. That's the, that's the goal. Uh, ordinances and resolutions. Correspondence. See Administrator's report. You said Joseph was not on, correct?
He's not on. She had planned, but she's in her midst, so.
Yeah, yeah. I did notice where, didn't we talk about putting power into the cemetery shop? I know she talked about it with me, but I wonder if it came to council, cause it says they're gonna same-time trench installing electrical conduit to get the lighting and power at the cemetery shop. And I, I heard kind of a ballpark cost, but I didn't know if.
The, the power is, not all of the expenses have been estimated yet. I know, last I heard, Angie was still waiting on estimate from the electrician. Um, but the trenching's not just for the electrical, they're also moving the water.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking near our cemetery budget. We sold that house about two years ago, and we had a hundred and thirty grand or something. Now it's in the forties and heading south fast, and I've just.
There's been some substantial projects for that one.
I'm kind of wondering where all the money went. It seemed like we had more than that not too long ago, so.
Carbon, pulverium, the shop. Truck. Big ones that are sticking out at me. Still, you have to.
Yeah, maybe you can ask her to send me some info on that, cause I'm curious about where it all went.
Is there a truck cemetery?
I believe the truck was out there too.
Well, we allocated fifteen grand from the ARCA funds for the truck for.
I don't recall that actually qualifying, no. I think that was one of the things that we discovered wouldn't qualify. So I can never do the breakdown of the things that come on cemetery, reserve fund.
So, so are we, to clarify this a little bit more for me, the truck, is that the one Mitch is using to do his work?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
This is being used for more than the cemetery, too?
Cemetery and maintenance, so that then. I don't know what the breakdown was, with how it was divided. I'd have to look back and look at it to see Angie.
He's kind of, looks like he's about half general fund or more, a little bit of projects and a third cemetery or something like that.
Depends on the time of year, yeah. He gets pulled over for other projects too, as needed.
He's gonna have to start mowing up there soon. He'll be busy.
So evidently, you've seen a separate document that shows. I haven't seen it. Well, you said forty grand, so.
No, our, here's our total left.
Uh, I don't know.
Or is it, that's what, that's what's one of my questions. Is this all we have left? Out of that, sell that house, or are we hiding some reserve money somewhere that I don't know of?
It is in the reserve fund, isn't it?
I thought it was in, I thought it was a reserve. It was a separate.
Separate.
Yeah.
But I can still have her send you guys a breakdown of what.
She here Friday?
None of us cemetery. She doesn't work Fridays, no.
Work Fridays.
But I can have her send a breakdown.
Doesn't she work forty hours a week now?
No.
Oh, I thought we moved her to, I thought we moved her to full-time.
Nope. She was part-time.
Send her an email.
I'm gonna send you guys breakdown.
Yeah, I just, I know, it looks like our, um, it looks like our income, we've been selling some stuff up there, but and when I see the bottom number, it's like, oh.
Yeah, no, I think the, I think that reserve's totally separate out of that.
I hope so.
Yeah, me too.
That was one of Bruce's big.
Yep.
I don't want him to start haunting me if we, I bet that reserves are out of sight.
No, it's, it's a reserve fund. And the reserve funds aren't all breakdown.
Yeah, he didn't see water, sewer reserves in there, so.
So the, the cost rollup's gonna come to council on this adding power to the shop up there?
I would assume so.
Does it seem like, it seemed like we're being told the work's already started here.
I think it likely depends on how much it ends up being. If it's a thousand dollars, then you guys don't need to prove that. Could theory come out of the operating budget or whatever, however that works. But if it's a substantial amount, then you guys will have to prove it, and it'll likely come out the reserve fund if it. But if it's a substantial amount, then you guys will have to prove it in a likely amount of reserve fund if it wouldn't be able to be funded out of that.
I always thought. I guess I always thought if it wasn't on a line item in the budget, then we, comes back to council when you're going out, out of the budget. Out of the line item to approve here.
It depends on what it is and how much it is. If I need erasers and it's not in the budget, but we can afford it. I'm getting erasers. I'm not gonna ask you for it.
Well, then we get in.
Large ticket item, obviously.
Yeah, then we get into these, um. Amended budgets to where.
Supplementals.
What if council says no one time when they come back and expect sixty grand extra? Well, they'll change it.
Then you would get a fine, a fine being in the audit.
Cause most times you would.
That would be.
Most time you would ask before you would spend in a real company, wouldn't you?
I mean, not every single expense of the city comes to council. It's large ticket items for things that don't fit in the budget as it exists. Supplemental is typically to make adjustments in the budget for unexpected expenses or things that have come up, like, like last time, the abatement. That was a supplemental. And that was an unexpected expense, so it wasn't in the budget that was adopted. That's the easiest one to explain.
Right. Right, but just spending out of the fund on something. That's kind of lower a fund that I'm concerned about, seems like it should be. I thought this was gonna be brought to councils. What I was under the impression.
Like I said, it is not my project and it, it would depend on how much that project costs. If it's five hundred dollars and it fits in the budget because there was savings elsewhere in that line item, then. The way that the budget works, I'm not saying that this specific project, but the way the budget works, if it works. And it doesn't need to be in a supplemental, then it can happen. Like here, we have lights go out and we need to hire an electrician, but we have the funds in the budget and they're available. We're going to hire the electrician and get it fixed. We're not gonna come to you and say, I have a hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents to fix this.
Well, I understand that. My, my concern is, is I was told it costs is around twenty-three hundred dollars, twenty-four hundred dollars, so. My concern is you can shift numbers all you want and not charge wages and charge you this and do it to make it fit, but.
It wouldn't fit because wages are in our own sign item. You can't just take wages and use it for electrical projects.
Right.
But we do not have the final cost of what the electric, adding electric to the shed will cost.
Right, I understand that, but we, we're, we're making income up there to replace a call, uh, do another colberium. And we're spending that money as fast as it comes in or faster. We're not gonna have the money to do another colberium addition up there if it starts catching on. That's my concern. So if you can relay that, or I can come down and talk to Joe Satt about it, but I do have concerns about the cemetery budget as a whole. I don't, I don't want to argue a little, one little thing. I'm not even saying I'm against it, but as a whole, I see the numbers going down. I need probably Angie to clarify that. We're not dropping down to where we have two years of operating budget and then we're down to, we don't have enough money to pay a maintenance guy or. Cause I know how tight that budget used to be. We had volunteers doing it, and then we said, we're gonna get it self-sustaining. And I don't think it's been self-sustaining, cause we've been doing all these upgrades and improvements from the sale of the house, so. I, I'm just a little bit concerned about the five-year projection, to be honest with you, on, on the cemetery fund as a whole. Do we have electrical up there already?
No.
So that would be.
The pole.
By my gate.
We have power at a pole.
At a pole, yeah.
So there's a meter?
That's what I said, and then we.
That's forty dollar base charge a month, so that's almost five hundred dollars a year just to have power available.
We also have a shop that you can only use some hours in the day.
Yeah.
And if the doors are open.
Yeah, I know they, well, put in some solar lights.
Five hundred bucks, put an inverter battery in there and get lights.
Yeah.
It's a little plan, it's a lot done, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But like I said, not my project.
Yeah.
The numbers aren't all put together yet. Since it's in this report, I'm sure I'll come back to you again, so.
You got that one down.
I guess it doesn't say, it doesn't say a date. I guess when I read we're trenching, I'm thinking you're up there getting some trencher in the ground and go.
Thing is gonna happen at the same time as the trenching at the state park. Same couple of weeks.
They're trenching for the water line, so they're just gonna drop in the electrical.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, oh, this week, March twenty eighth through thirty-first, electrical conduit.
So it'll be, there's gonna be multiple trenching projects happening, and those are two of the ones, so.
Are we renting a trencher or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But they need to move water also, so it's not like it's gonna be trenched for no reason.
Right. Okay, well, I'll wait for a roll up on that then. I have some mayors and counselors. Dale, you always have something?
Oh, yeah, I'll throw some. Donna, Donna, who and I, we started up the lake pumps, so. Uh, we did have one intake hose that was cracked. Had to, had to spend a little time day two to get that remedy, got it going. So everything's looking really good, pumping a lot of water. The concern last year we had over, looked like a couple of pumps that lost some efficiency is, uh, been restored when I cleaned the screens this year. The internal, there's an internal little dome screen in there.
Mm-hmm.
And all those fur needles out of the trees that got burnt last summer, they were wedged across there and then the algae and gunk cemented about a third of it closed. So that's, that's what caused reduction in the flows. We had two of them that were flowing weird and one that was fine, and that's what I seen. It was two domes plugged and one what was fine.
Is that a chore to tear that apart?
Uh, it ended up being a little bit, cause they used, uh, uh, regular ferris bolts.
Sure, no stainless steel?
And, uh, last year they came apart easy with my impact gun. This year they just twisted off, so.
Oh.
Ended up buying new bolts and putting in, fixing them up.
Some stainless steel ones now?
Yeah, but stainless.
And there's three of those, huh?
Three of them, four bolts apiece.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's all looking good, so.
I know some trees keep falling back there too.
Oh, boy, those albers are really falling apart. They're aging out.
The snow took a hit on two or three of them back there, didn't it?
Well, I think I reported the last meeting, that one came down when Chris's wife was walking around with the kids. They were at the dock and one down by the river fell. Up toward the trail, but was far short of it.
Oh.
But, uh. Yeah. We got a few trees around there. Probably need some attention. I did, Tim, Tim's aware of them, so. Some of them, I don't think he wanted. He went to fall that one and it just basically blew up on him.
There is a maintenance issue I, I've seen, I forget to mention, is, um. Straight across from our camp house, far side, far side of the trail, like a duly truck had cruised through there from the tracks that I saw. But the electrical lid is all smashed and open. It's been that way, I think, for a year or so, and the wires are sticking up and those are hot. So we need to get a new cover or something. It's a little concrete one or something. It's been that way for.
I see the, it's like the concrete's all smashed and there's rebar.
Little, little, oh, yeah, it's an old school one, but you got wires right there. Some kid could plug and play with pretty easily if he wanted to or.
And it's electrical for the lights. Did you capture that, Stephanie? You probably need to put a work request in for that.
Jeff's probably got one.
You pick them up and you call city hall, let them know about the issues as you discover it, if he gets hurt.
I just forget all the time. I just hit me, so I thought I'd been.
Well, I'd seen it too.
Yeah. Counselor Norman, anything?
No.
Okay, moving on. Action item summary.
It'll be on your meeting minutes.
Yeah, and Joseph's not here to talk about the action item summary from last time that was in here. But I'm not gonna.
Last meeting?
Oh, it's in our. Do you hold action item summary? I had a question mark on two of them. Staff will inspect the reservoir.
Oh, yeah.
Any news on that?
You'll have to ask the boss.
Yeah, staff will be potential meeting dates for the committee gathering brought to us at this meeting.
Again, ask the boss.
I thought you were the boss.
Ask your employee, your city administrator.
You hadn't heard anything then? Okay. Anything else? Meeting adjourned. Eleven forty P M.
Yeah, run a mean meeting.